I call the Tuesday, November 12, 2019, work session of the Portsmouth City Council to order. Madam Croft, will you call me the whole, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle?
Here.
Mr. Glover?
Here.
Oh, sorry.
Mr. Clark?
Oh, sorry.
It was my fault.
You did say Glover, right?
Yes.
Yes, I did. Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Semis?
Here.
Mayor Rowe?
Here.
Thank you.
Tonight's our great pleasure to meet with our General Assembly delegation. And first, congratulations on your reelections and on the election of Don as our newest delegate member. And we know this is a time is really your scariest resource in this time of the year as you ramp up to start the session 2020. Now, I understand that Senator Cosgrove has got a conflict.
Yes.
For the purpose of everybody, will you introduce yourself?
Sure. I'm Kristi Newkirk. I'm the Chief of Staff for Senator John Cosgrove.
And my constituent.
And...
And my constituent, too.
Y'all got the best constituents.
That's right.
And so, thank you for joining us tonight as we present and draft form our 2020 legislative package. With that, how about if we start? Senator Lucas, do you have any comments that you'd like to make?
Well, yes, I do. I have only just, within the last, less than 30 minutes, gotten off the phone with Meat Spots, talking about different iterations of a Casino Bill that's going to be dropped in different localities. And I guess maybe you've read about some of those in the newspaper. And so now, we're just trying to track just how many bills are all going to be out there. Yeah, that's what we hear. And so, right now, it seems like the number is increasing. So that's my hot button.
And ours, too, as you well know. Dr. Patton, is now time to present our legislative program. Would you introduce that, please?
Yes, sir. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, tonight, we have the presentation of the city's 2020 legislative initiatives presented by Mrs. Sherri Neal, intergovernmental. The past three years, the city staff has developed the city state legislative initiatives, and supported public policies will be presented. During Ms. Neal's presentation this evening, we welcome your discussions and decisions made as to which items we hope that you will be patrons by both a delegate or our senators. Mrs. Neal?
Thank you, Dr. Patton. Good evening, Mayor Rowe, members of Council, and our General Assembly delegation, and Ms. Newkirk. We're going to go right into this for the sake of time. We have a few, several legislative initiatives that we would like to share with you. First one is dealing with unwanted telephone solicitation calls prohibited. Our current code of Virginia has not been updated since 2005, and it doesn't reflect a lot of the new things that are going on with spoofing calls and robo-calls and texts and all of these other things that's going on that's very bothersome to a lot of us. Attorney General Mark Herring had joined in 17, 18, and 19 with several other state attorney generals, including North Carolina, to compel the FCC to stop these reducing, annoying, dangerous, and spoofing calls. And for those who don't know what a spoofing call is, spoofing is when they call from a number that looks like a legitimate agency or a legitimate number, and it really isn't. And that's very problematic, especially for elderly people who are getting calls. They're saying they're Social Security Administration and so on and so forth, and it's really not them, just trying to get their information. So, North Carolina actually passed a bill this year that addressed a lot of the issues that is not in our current code, like telephone communications using voice or text, pre-recorded, lava facility, over telephone, wire, or wireless telephone. So, the ask here is to update our legis, our Code of Virginia to incorporate some of what North Carolina has done to bring our code up to what it should be to deal with these particular problems. The next one is one that we had last year that we fought very, very hard for. TANF is Temporary Assistance to Needy Families, and currently, Virginia is still one of just a few states that has a lifetime ban against persons who have felony distribution charges to receive these types of benefits. And TANF, you can, is money distributed, but you also have access to working, learning, workshops, dental services, childcare services. There are a lot of services that go along with the TANF that's very helpful and needed for people who are just coming out of jail or prison to help to keep them from recidivating. So, we are still just one of five states that still implement a full ban on the SNAP. And SNAP is your food stamps. And what they've done in Virginia, we have a modified ban on SNAP. So, if you have a felony or a misdemeanor conviction for possession, you can receive SNAP, but with conditions that you have to follow from the court or go, whatever the court has placed upon you. But if, again, drug distributions, there is a lifetime ban on them. So, we are asking, once again, we got really close last year, but with the new memberships that we have and the change in power, we're hopeful that this one will go through this The next one. In Commonwealth of Virginia, it's local government's responsibility to shelter its citizens in cases of emergency. In the absence of hurricane-rated buildings in our area, many cities such as Portsmouth refuses schools to house our citizens during these emergencies. The problem is that a lot of these schools are not, they're 50 years of age or older. They're not ADA compliant. They may have some issues needing some upgrades for electricity to run generators, things of that nature. So, what we're asking here is to have the General Assembly create a grant fund to aid locality such as ours to be able to update things in our shelters, like for emergency situations. We requested budget amendments for about $5 million over two years of the new biennium, 2.5 million apiece. And that can be matched, it can be a match grant with the local government, such as ours, using some of our CBD, uh, community development funds that we give them. Yes, yes, yes. And these issues were also highlighted in a 2017 annual report on the Commonwealth Emergency Shelter Capabilities and Readiness, which was submitted to Governor McCullough by the Virginia Department of Emergency Management. And the next one, this was a, this is a bit of a carryover from our 2019 legislative package. We had an initiative in there dealing with phishing, data mining, some are calling it now for public employees' personal identification information. Delegate Heretic had patroned the bill. We were able to get it through by asking for a letter, a recommendation from the then Speaker of the House. FOIA had put together a subcommittee on, on this matter. And long story short, we've been able to get it through the subcommittee. Full committee has approved to have the study extended for another year because they realize that there are some valid reasons why we need to address this and update it in the code. So, any legislation this asks is basically saying, any legislation that should be submitted by FOIA dealing with this in the upcoming General Assembly session is that we support The next one is dealing with the Chesapeake Bay Regulatory Programs and the Integration of the Stormwater and Erosion and Sediment Control Act. Several years ago, in 2012, there was a bill passed that wanted to consolidate these acts to try to get rid of the redundancies in them. As the next year, the General Assembly passed a bill that trans, excuse me, initially, the Department of Conservation and Recreation was supposed to handle that. In 2013, the General Assembly went back and they moved all of that over to DEQ. And then, there's some other changes that came along between 13, 16, and 19. Where we at right now is that in 2016, another bill came out that required the consolidation of the Erosion and Sediment Control Act with the Stormwater Act, but they left out the C, the Chesapeake Bay Prevention Act. So, for cities such as ours, it's not helpful for us because we still have to deal with the redundancies that seem to come up between the three programs. And so, the request here, and we also know that, we also realize DEQ has had some problems as far as their funding levels, and they've lost staff members, and they don't have the ability to do a lot that has been requested to them to do. So, what we're asking is for legislation that's requiring DEQ to hire an outside consultant to actually look at these three programs and to try to remove the redundancies, and budget amendment to go along with that to help give the money to DEQ to be able to do that.
Let me pause right here and recognize Delegate Elect, Don Scott. Congratulations on your election.
Thank you, Mayor.
We look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
The next ask is dealing with broadband access. Currently, we're asking for a change in the code that's going to allow municipalities to provide telecommunications services to residents and businesses. And the way the code currently stands, it's preventing this from happening. This ruling would allow telecommunication providers to not only focus on areas of dense population, but to widen the digital divide to low-income citizens. Governor Northam has this as one of his strategic plans, and we're supporting Governor Northam in his, in his effort to actually expand the broadband. The last initiative, oops, didn't go, is for our Children's Museum of Virginia. Our Children's Museum is one of the best museums in the Commonwealth of Virginia, as we all know, and is very well-attended from people far and near. It welcomes about 160,000 visitors per year, and in 2020, and next year, it's going to be launching its 40th anniversary celebration. What we're asking here is that the General Assembly provide $200,000 in the line, in the way of a budget amendment to aid a regional and statewide marketing and promotional awareness campaign in support of our 40th anniversary celebration. That's it for our legislative initiatives. What follows here is just a list of supported state public policy initiatives, and they're not in any particular order of importance. And I'm not going to go through all of them. I'm just going to maybe hit a few of them, such as the first one being K-12 Increase in State Funding. A recent publication came out by the Education and Law Center and called Making the Grade 2019: How Fair Is Your School Funding in Your State? Virginia rated a D. I thought that was very interesting. It says 13%, we have a 13% poverty rate for school-aged children, and funding levels were at D, and funding effort was a D, and the distribution between high-poverty schools and low-poverty schools was so small that they just rated a C. So, K-12 education is definitely an area that we, we support increase in funding in, as well as the Chesapeake Bay, not to say the least.
Go back to that slide. I just wanted to report out, and you may be aware of this, everybody, that at its annual meeting in October, the Virginia Municipal League took action to essentially legalize marijuana.
Yes, sir.
So, that, that's the position that the, the league has taken, and we were part of that, that vote.
Many of us had submitted bills to decriminalize marijuana last year and the year before. As a matter of fact, I was one of those people.
And we thank you for that.
And so, that effort is going to continue. You signed onto that?
I did, too.
Yeah, he signed onto it.
We're also supporting the ask for more funding for our regional jails, and especially our Hampton Roads Regional Jail, which, it had been noted by the United States Department of Justice that they're underfunded, they don't have enough staff there to do what needs to be done. And they need an additional 20 officers out at the regional jail.
Senator and I took a tour of that jail. I was in law enforcement in Chesapeake for 15 years, and a lot of people don't fund our jails like we should, you know, because they have what they call criminals in there, but they're human beings. And, and more importantly, we have staff in there. And so, both parties deserve to have the safety and security when they go to their job. And that, that Hampton Roads Regional Jail is, is in need of...
Definitely.
More deputies, and probably more than the 20 that they have.
Yeah, thank you. And of course, casino gaming, we're definitely in support of that, as well as increasing this local stormwater assistance fund by $50 million. And we were part of the number of localities that sent letters to the government in support of that particular issue. Restoring funding to the community services boards is really important. The General Assembly, a couple of years ago, did a little bit of, when they passed the Medicaid expansion, they took some money away from our community services boards and thought that it was going to be replaced by the Medicaid dollars that was coming in. It's not really working out that way, and the community services boards really needs that money back. So, we're supporting that they put that money back into the upcoming biennium budget. And that's what I have.
Any questions?
Questions answered.
We're on schedule tonight to adopt this in our federal package on resolution. We welcome your comments, your input, the point that we missed, the two issues. But before you answer that question, I want to, again, our sincere thanks and gratitude for the hard work, the hard work up there, all the citizens, all within your district. I'm selfish. How you do it is amazing to me. I mean, with over 2,000 pieces of legislation being introduced anywhere from a page to 50 pages long, and to stay on top of things, my hat goes off to you, and thank you very much, again. And you've brought home the bacon. I mean, we have, it's the last three...
We work hard.
Yeah. So, thank you again, on behalf of the city.
Well, I think the, some of the legislative district lines have been streamlined, because I think you have, how many districts now? How many localities now?
I have three.
You have three?
Twenty-seven.
How many?
Twenty, you mean precincts?
No, how many cities?
Oh, just one. Four, five, six, seven.
Okay. Okay. I have 11 cities.
Seven. Cosgrove has seven.
Counties.
We know where your first love is, though. It shows in what you do, and we appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just take a moment, going back to the, the slide that Sherri did on phishing and data mining, House Joint 628, which I introduced at the city's request last year, I'd just like to take just a quick minute to let everybody know how helpful and how instrumental Sherri, Mr. Aspie, and Daniel Smith of your Intellectual Technology Department were in helping get this before the FOIA Council, Daniel Jones, I'm sorry, thank you, Vice Mayor, to, to get this in front of the FOIA Council. I think when this first emerged, it was one of a good many bills that the House rules was taking up very quickly and disposing of very quickly. We managed to keep this one alive largely through the intervention of Ms. Neal. And, you know, now that the FOIA Council's taken a good, hard look at it and listened to the experience of the city of Portsmouth and some others, it's being, taken much more seriously statewide. And I, I think that, I understand that Virginia Municipal League has also included this on its legislative agenda as well. So, I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your leadership and the substantial assistance the staff has provided in advancing this, because I think it's a, it's an issue that we, you know, we as citizens, you know, certainly take as significant a threat to our security by, by these types of people. And I think Portsmouth has taken the state leadership in identifying this issue and pushing it forward, and for that, I thank you.
Another report out from the Virginia Municipal League was the whole issue of these gray slot machines, or I call them vape machines, and pulling out their games of skill or games of chance. And one morning, they had a whole morning devoted to, or at least half the morning, to a panel that discussed, you know, the difference between a game of skill and chance in Virginia, as it's defined by law. But they're popping up everywhere. And people ask me, are we getting money from them?
No.
No.
The answer is no.
We're losing.
And...
We had a bill last year, and the bill was pulled because I had to spend most of my time on the Casino Bill. But I do understand that there will be legislators who will be introducing bills to repeal those.
And we knew that from a prior conversation I had with you.
Right.
But I thought it was important for the public to hear that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Any, any other comments or questions?
Guess the only thing I see, and, and first of all, thank you for this, and thank you for preparing it. When I just ran, I kind of ran on taking a look at our transportation issues, especially the tolls, and I'm surprised not to see anything in here regarding the issues dealing with tolls. Have we given up on that issue here in the city?
Not at all.
I'm just going to see that as an initiative here. I guess I'm missing out on something.
Well, let me, let me explain, if I may, two things. One is that when the budget got adopted, there was a both narrative and money war that directed the governor through the Secretary of Transportation to do a study of tolls here in Hampton Roads. About at the same time in January, this was actually before, the Hampton Roads Transportation Planning Organization, which represents all 17 jurisdictions, took a unanimous vote for the first time to say that this is not a Portsmouth issue, it's a regional issue. And we created a task force, and then they made me chairman of it, to, to work with the state. And so, we had a meeting here in this, this room with the Secretary of Transportation, the, the Commissioner of FIDOT, and their staff. That was a $2 billion project. A billion dollars was put up by cash, then a billion dollars was debt-financed. And it was debt-financed with 650 million in revenue bonds, private revenue bonds where the debt service, the mortgage payments, paid for by tolls. And the balance was a, what's called a TFI loan from the Federal Department of Transportation. And so, in order for the, fundamentally, for the tolls to go away, that debt's got to go away. But here's the catch. That wonderful contract that the state signed...
The governor. We had no vote in it. The legislators denied the vote.
Yeah. Not only does the day, the debt's got to go away, but they have to be paid what is the fair market value of the improvements that they made. I figure that. And then, on top of that, they have to be paid from the point of the end of the contract, when it, if you pay it off, terminate it early, to the end, how much profit they would have made.
That's right.
And so, those are, of course, debatable numbers. It's like the price of anything. I may think that water's worth 50 cents, and somebody else might say, no, it's a dollar. But, so you end up with a, a debate there, and then the whole debate about how much will you earn if you net present value that, what discount rate to use. But the governor's office is working to get those numbers so that at least we'll know what, from the state's side, what it takes to buy out...
That buyout.
Yeah. And we have made it clear that buyout's not the only option, that going forward, if they need $50 in revenue to cover debt service, then don't put it all coming from tolls. Let, let's say, $40 come from tolls and $10 come from some type of transportation fund from the state. And don't make it a regional issue, that this, this is the, the message that we're, the region is saying, is that this transportation network is a critical component of the total transportation network for the state.
Correct.
And if the, if the ports represent 10% of the state's economy, and it does, then this is an important issue for the entire state.
Yeah, it is.
Thank you, Mayor. Luckily for me, I've also read those contracts and read some of that language as well. I'm very familiar with all of the issues that you've raised. I'm just surprised that we, as a, as a city, hasn't put our, put a tack in the wall on where our position is regardless of how far-fetched it might be. That's the only thing I'm saying. So, hopefully, as we move forward, we'll be able to ask for what we want. You have not, because you asked not, and it doesn't sound like we asked for anything. That's all I can say.
Well, our ask has been heard, and it's on the table, and it's being worked.
Okay.
So, it's not, it's not that it's not being worked.
Right, okay.
They've got to come up with those two numbers for anything else to happen, because the first thing you all are going to ask us, or ask anybody, how much is it going to cost?
Right.
And when you, we know that a billion dollars' worth of debt's got to go away. And then, what is the fair market value of all those improvements? That's got to be determined, and that, they're working that number. And then, what is the amount of money that they would have earned from here to 50 years out in the future?
Yeah.
And that's...
Is it a 2020 answer, or a 21 answer?
Well, your net, your net present value...
No, no, no. I mean, when, when the working group comes back with what they think those numbers are.
2020 answer.
It's a 2020 answer.
Yeah.
I guess maybe now, we need to decide which one of your, members of your delegation will, can, will be building. So, before anybody else speaks up, I guess, since I'm going to be the Chair of Education and Health, and I'm also serving on finance as a budget conferee, I need to take the K-12 Increase State Funding.
That was a supportive position. That wasn't a legislative initiative.
You're going to ask for some money before the years out?
I, I, no, I'm not saying... And I, I appreciate that, and that's a big thing, if I may say, that Senator Lucas being a budget conferee is huge, and really huge. I think, since I've been doing this for over 30 years now, I was a child when I started. She's the first woman of color that I know of that actually served as a budget conferee in the Commonwealth of Virginia, so I, I think that's huge and to be commended.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator, for all the... So, back to the legislative initiatives.
Okay, so you're telling me that you're not asking for any money?
We're supporting you putting more money in there. Yes, ma'am.
Or some more.
We have asked further in the front.
Just want to be clear.
Yes, ma'am. And again, I'll be meeting with each of these individually, once it's adopted by council, so I'll go over the package with you and, uh, the identification, Delegate Elect. This, this is just a draft. We actually put together a booklet, which you're probably familiar with by now, so the booklet doesn't come out until after the council adopts their resolution, so we can put it in there, and then we have to get your information as well. So, that can be included. And then, I'll make an appointment to meet with you as well, so we can go over it in a little bit more detail.
All right. Thank you.
Not to put you all on the spot and make you decide tonight, how about if we leave that to a future discussion? Would that be better? I'm asking for guidance here.
Your call.
Do you see anything here that, that we shouldn't be asking for?
No, I think you've done a good job.
Thank you.
Or did it, either one of the delegates choose the legislative initiative on page one?
Well, I, since I'm still on Commerce and Labor, and, you know, I can certainly work on that, together with the, the data mining, I'll continue with HG 628, as that winds its way through FOIA Council. And broadband is, Senator, as you understand, is a bill I started, actually started with when I was a freshman, so I've been working on that throughout. And I think we should all try to get money for the Children's Museum, so...
Absolutely.
I think that's something we should all put our names on.
Well, since we're both on Commerce and Labor, we, maybe we'll have a bill sponsored on both sides.
Right.
Okay. Which one's with us again, please?
On page one.
Mm-hmm, this one? The top unsolicited?
Yes.
Okay.
So, there'll be a Senate bill and a House bill?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
And the eligibility for food stamps.
Oh, we're going to wait until we met one-on-one to decide. I mean, I don't, I didn't know. If y'all, you guys are already experienced doing it, I'll let y'all choose the ones, but I've been waiting for a committee.
You're going to be on all of them.
Yeah.
So you're the new kid on the block, so you get to work on all of it.
Kevin, can you go to page three?
Yes.
Three.
Is that three? All right, okay. Now, I would like to add to this one some developments that have come along since our efforts in the last General Assembly session. The State Department of Social Services has submitted legislation to the governor's office, as well as the budget amendment, to provide tanniff to those who are in possession charges only, but they're still not dealing with distribution. So it's a step, because we had nothing before, and we may such as think about it. I think that's why they realized they needed to do something. So I do feel really that we have a good opportunity right now in the upcoming General Assembly session to actually take this all away. And not only for TANF, but for SNAP as well. Yes, sir.
Sure. Can you help me understand? I guess I'm a little confused, because if you did your time and you paid your debt to society, whether you distributed drugs or whatever you did...
How did it come down?
How did they get to the conclusion just...
Makes no sense.
Drug distribution is to be held to a different standard?
It all came down in 1996 under President Clinton.
Okay.
When they were doing the war on drugs.
Got it.
Yeah, and then they passed the, it's called the Personal Responsibility and Work Opportunity Reconciliation Act. And that was the part of the act. But it gave every state an option to opt out.
Okay.
Okay? You can opt out, or you can modify, but you have that ability to do so. So Virginia only decided to do a modification on the SNAP piece for people who had possession charges. And then they had criteria around it. You had to do everything the judge said. You had to go report for drugs, screen, and whatever, whatever, whatever. They weren't doing anything but tanniff. If you have a distribution charge, you got nothing. And we're still, like, one of the few that still do that.
Okay.
Did that help?
Thank you.
Is there any conversation, or is there any room for this legislation to be expanded? Because it was recently brought up to my attention that there's also some concerns with persons who are convicted or released. And now, when they come back to try to find housing, they can't move into public housing with their family members if they have some of these similar charges. And someone asked me if I could bring it up or speak to legislation to try to address this, because you have a family member who has been, you know, did their time, and now they're coming back and trying to reunite with their family. If they live in public housing, they're not allowed to live there. So there's still a separation of families. So is there any expansion in this legislation? Or we need to create a whole new block for that?
Shall I answer that?
Solomon, will you study that?
I will. I'll certainly look at and see what the options are and have a discussion with the folks over at PRHA what the impediments would be.
Well, thank you again. This concludes our presentation, and thank you for feedback and again for what you do. Further comments? We'll move on to the state if you'd like.
I mean this up against 7 o'clock. Thank you.
Okay. Oh, we could let them go and then I can do the best we can. Thanks.
Good evening to everybody.
All right, let's go to the five-year forecast.
Yes. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council, the second presentation, Ms. Gloria Washington, Budget Officer, will present the city's five-year forecast for the period of FY 2021 to FY 2025. The city's adopted financial policy states that the city will prepare an annually updated long-range five-year financial forecast of the operating budget using trend indicators and projections of annual operating revenues, expenditures, capital improvements associated with debt service and fund balance levels. This forecast is an internal planning tool for the city's financial staff, City Council, and this presentation will be shared with the city's rating agents, S&amp;P Global Ratings, Moody's Investor Service, and Finch Ratings. Mrs. Washington.
Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, and members of City Council. Tonight, I will be presenting the city's five-year forecast for the period 2021 through 2025. The Government Finance Officers Association recommends that governments at all levels forecast major revenues and expenditures. And national credit rating agencies consider multi-year financial planning as a best practice for highly rated local governments. Long-term financial planning is the process of aligning financial capacity with long-term service objectives. It will serve as a link between departments and city management. This conservative forecast should not be confused with the budget. For example, our weather forecasters predict trends in weather patterns to provide a weekly forecast. The five-year forecast utilizes some of this same methodology, which will be personal, which will be described on our next slides. The forecast is a planning tool to assist management with future decision-making. Several methodologies were used to formulate the forecast. For revenues, a time series analysis involving comparison of the same items, such as monthly sales revenue, over a significantly long period to detect general patterns of relationships between associated factors and project the future direction of these patterns over a five- or 10-year period. Staff also analyzed trends in variables that affect revenues, sought input from departments, elected officials responsible for generating revenues. For expenditures, staff analyzed historical trends in operating accounts, sought guidance from Human Resources and VRS regarding health, retirement, and life insurance, and applied projections of the Consumer Price Index, which measures the change in the prices paid by urban consumers for irrepresentative baskets of goods and services. Before we share the five-year forecast, it's important to look back at FY 2019. The real estate tax is the largest revenue source for the city and still is experiencing an exceedingly modest recovery, growing at only an annual rate of about 8.85%. Actual revenues exceeded the budget by 0.3% as compared to the previous year. Other local taxes, which consist of sales, cigarette, bank franchise, not to name all of those that are listed on this slide, increased by about 2% from FY 2018. From FY 2010 through FY 2019, these have grown at a modest annual rate of 0.8%. Regarding telecom, where we see that that has underperformed, we have some data with states that half the households in the area have eliminated landlines and fax lines. So that has had a huge impact on the decline of our telecom tax. Personal property taxes, including machinery and tools, rose about 1.2% above last year and has grown at an annual rate of 0.7% since FY 2010. Five-year forecast. This is a planning tool, and we've done, looked at our FY 2020 budget as our base and did a projection of '21 through FY 2025. Some of the areas that were forecasted to, that impact this revenue forecast, which are limiting growth factors, are we've had the bridge loan, which the city has received for three years. And so that is not being included in the 2021 revenue forecast. We've had lower anticipated investment earnings, about $500,000, due to Federal Reserve rate reductions. We've also, again, as I mentioned earlier, downward adjustments in the Virginia telecommunications tax of about $688,000, B-pole about $344,000, building permit revenue about $162,000. On the positive side, regarding positive revenue adjustments, real estate via a 2% increase in the collection rate, about $1.3 million, is partly due to aggressive efforts by our city treasurer. Personal property narrowly $2 million above our '20 budget projection. Consumer revenues of general sales and meals are really holding their own, $91,000 increase and a $462,000 increase in bank franchise and E-911 taxes. The five-year forecast for general fund expenditures, again, using 2020 as our base, the adopted budget, 2021 through 2025 being forecast years. Some of the expenditure assumptions that were utilized, no increases for initial planning purposes for salaries for 2021. For 2022 through 2025, we assumed a 2% increase based on the Consumer Price Index. For general operating buckets, electricity, utilities, all of those type of expenses, they were based on historical trends in the Consumer Price Index. Internal service budgets, as fleet maintenance, information technology, and risk management, were based on five- and 10-year historical trends. The CIP follows the adopted 2020 through '24 CIP regarding debt and the transfer of cash to the CIP from fund balance. And then debt service reflects current debt issuances through June 30, 2019, and projected debt issuances aligned with the 2024 planning years.
I think I know the answer to this, but where is debt in that chart?
It's in non-departmental. Yes. And subject to change based on the 2021-2025 CIP budget planning process, which we have, under the city manager's direction, started about 30 days earlier this year so that we can get input as far as, and try to have all our projections ready for the start of the beginning calendar year. This chart compares the revenues and expenditures that we just illustrated on the previous slides. And you'll see for '21 through '25, the expenditures over the revenue started at about $6 million and go all the way to about $9 million in 2025. Again, this is a planning tool, and a lot of this is predicated on that we're looking at economic development initiatives. They are not included in the forecast at this time. That we have not gone through the budget process to look at all of our revenue alternatives. So again, this is a planning purpose. So for '21, we're projecting a deficit of about $6 million, which is 2.4% of the budget, all the way through '25, which is about 3.4%. Again, this is a tool that we revisit every year. So this planning document, next year, we will look at the five-year forecasts of '21 through '26. So for each planning year, we will be going in and looking at the budget. As part of our city code and charter, we must have a balanced budget. So this is a starting point for the city regarding looking at projections for the year. And it also provides the manager in meeting with council on strategic decisions that we have to make regarding services and programs for the city. The last slide that I will talk about, and we did present this last year, is measures of tax burden in variables that affect revenues and expenditures. This slide provides context of the fiscal stress under which Portsmouth operates. According to the state, in the fiscal stress, you'll see number one ranked as most stressed. Portsmouth is considered number 13 among the 133 localities in the state. So the lower the rank, the more fiscally stressed you are. Norfolk is at 14, Hampton 17, and Newport News 15. Number one, fiscally stressed, when we look at the number of cities and counties, is Emporia. Petersburg is number two, and Franklin is number three, just to give some context to that. Our revenue capacity rank, again, number one ranks as least capacity. Portsmouth is at 12, Norfolk 17, Hampton and Newport News are at 25 and 31. Revenue effort rank, one ranks as the highest effort, and you'll see that we're comparable. Norfolk has the highest rank compared to Portsmouth. And we use these as our four peer cities that have commonalities among the population and their financial aspect. Again, we know percent of tax-exempt property. We have the highest among our peers, 43.5%, compared to Hampton at 25.5%, Norfolk 37.3%, Newport News 31.5%. Another factor that we look at is the dependency population, under 18 and over 65. We've got the highest percentage of dependents in that category, a 37.5%, with Hampton and Newport News ranking close to that, 35.6% and 35.4%. Where we do well is in our per capita local revenues as a percentage of per capita income and real estate taxes as a percentage of median household. We rank pretty well among our peers. We're at, for example, in the per capita local revenues, we're at 4.09%, Hampton 4.08. So we're one of the lowest in our peer comparisons of per capita income compared to local revenues. The same goes for the real estate taxes as a percentage of median household income. We're at 3.06, even though we have the higher tax rate of $1.30. But our household homes are probably, that's a big factor in that regarding what we pay according to our tax rate. Norfolk is at 3.89% of the median household. Hampton's at 2.89%, and Newport News 3.19%.
Given the revenue capacity of our sister cities in the region and the lower percentage of tax-exempt property, one would think that there would be a greater disparity between our rank and our neighbors. And I think it's pretty amazing that we're that close.
It is amazing that we're that close. So we're doing a lot of things right, evidently. Yes. Any questions?
Good, thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome.
When it comes to the five-year forecast, there are 16 action items on the agenda. In the interest of time, because we do have more to do in this work session, can everybody take a look at the agenda? We've got a public hearing on the use of the council chamber. That's where we decided that we wanted to get public input as we formulate and develop our use of the council chamber that we'll formally adopt at a future meeting. We have two zoning items that are on second reading. And then typically, Dr. Pat goes over the following 16 items, one by one. But in the interest of time, does anybody have any questions on anything in particular? on anything in particular? None?
No.
Can we move on then?
No.
Report backs, Dr. Pat?
I have no report backs at this time of year.
All right. City Council liaison, we'll start with Shannon.
So first of all, Planning Commission. Mr. Jonathan Hartley retired after 40 years of service in planning in many different localities, but I think his tenure here was for nine years. I certainly enjoyed having John in the Planning Commission meetings, and we'll miss him. Just wanted to let everybody know on that front. And I do not have any other reports at this time.
We did have school board, but I'm going to defer to the Vice Mayor. Update us on that.
Yes, we did, we had our council liaison meeting with our Porton Public Schools on October 28. Some of the things that we want to bring back to the table, one was the EAT for education, where that would help us to be able to reduce some of the taxes, getting everyone to pay into that tax. So that's something that we want to take back to a future meeting and come up with more information on how we can get that brought to you for information. The reappropriation request was a big item. I know that we were supposed to have that on our agenda tonight. And I did see the Vice Chair of the, well, the Chair of the School Board, Mr. Clark Perrin, and he asked why wasn't it on our agenda? And I mentioned that we didn't get everything that we needed to proceed with that. So there's some discrepancy with that, but I told him I didn't have time on their end.
That's right.
So we don't have what we need to put it on our agenda today to have that discussion, but that reappropriation request is still lingering with that. The risk management summary of claims was one of the issues. Of course, the $5.1 million risk management fund that they have. And of course, the $9 million risk management resolution is needed for approval. We will meet again on December 5 to go over some of these same items. And then again, next year, January 6. So we're coming up with some education, some information that, you know, that's going to help us to work better together, but we need to be able to communicate that Mr. Falk was forthcoming in some of the information that was not evident before, you know. And so they're making it aware that they are getting a better understanding of what it is. So we're looking for a better working relationship with them. Of course, they will be giving us a report back on the formula funding at a later date, and those meetings have met. And they will be giving us more information on how that's going to present to us. There was some concern that the amount would be lower than what they have. And of course, to start out, it's going to be the base, will be what we gave them last year, which was the $55 million. My next report with PRHA, they will be meeting on this coming Thursday as opposed to next Thursday because the governor will be here on the 21st, and they will be attending that. And we all got an email inviting us to the ribbon-cutting. The mayor will be out of town on the 15th. They will be having the groundbreaking for Lexington Place. That's where it used to be Lincoln Park. They've torn it down. They're going to break the ground to go ahead and proceed with their new development called Lexington Place Phase 1. So that will be Friday at 1:00, and you all welcome to come.
Good report. Thank you. Any questions, Elisa? Bill?
Nothing reports since our last meeting.
The Planning Council met, and one of the representatives met with you and talked about dealing with the homeless in the city of Portsmouth. And they're seeking from Portsmouth Redevelopment and Housing Authority the home vouchers. And they're going to put the program together to deal with the homeless on the street and try to get them into homes. At the same time, they're going to continue to help feed at Oasis. The Portsmouth Behavioral Healthcare Services, they just released their final annual report dealing with all of the folk, letting you know the people that they served, the financial records, and those things that they would need for the General Assembly to address them with, and that's online.
Very good.
We are, we have a need for a closed session, and we'll most likely not cover everything, so we need to come back after the regular agenda. The, one of the things we'll consider is people that we need to interview for appointments. And to keep this on track, Monday, the 25th of November is our next work session. The Personnel Committee is recommending that we start, instead of at 6 o'clock, we start at 5:00. So we can spend that first hour interviewing the interviewees. Is there anybody got a problem with that? Then we'll put that on the agenda tonight to have a motion to, is that what we need to do?
Change.
Yeah. Also, the Clean Community Commission, Bill's made the recommendation. You want to cover that, Bill?
Yes, I was at our meeting today, Personnel Committee. I mentioned to the mayor that I feel there's a need to reactivate our Clean Community Commission to put greater emphasis on keeping our city clean, on beautification. I recall at one point in time, that was a very active commission, a lot of enthusiasm, a lot of energy, and I think a lot of results in beautifying and keeping our city clean. So I suggested to the mayor, you know, we'd open up the discussion to see if there was consensus to do that. With that said, each of you should have a copy of the bylaws and the parameters of the former commission. And that's part of our charter, so that part wasn't, we just didn't staff it. So it's still there. Obviously, I think our city attorney probably should look over it. And any suggestions that anybody has relative to that, we can give you time to digest it and come back with any recommendations. And I think that was at-large commission, as I recall. Is that correct, Deborah?
No, sir, but the recommendation is that the group be at-large this time.
Everybody should have this ordinance, and that's the ordinance that Bill's making reference to. And first, can we get consensus that we bring this back to life? It's still on the books.
Yes.
Anybody against that? Can we get a consensus to direct the City Manager and the City Attorney to look at the ordinance, because it's part of the city code, and come up with the appropriate amendments that we make this an at-large with no city staff? You'll notice that on the second page, a city staff person serves ex officio. Of course, city staff will support it. Do we have a consensus that we test?
Yes.
All right, now, I'll recognize you.
Okay, and Mayor, just for the record, when the commission existed long ago, Claudia Cox-Wen was the staff person in Parks and Recreation.
And Meg Pittenger also.
And Meg Pittenger. So we did have someone dedicated to that commission. And we will look at that as we look into the new budget.
All right, just to recap, we've agreed that we're going to repopulate this commission, that we're asking the City Attorney and City Manager to look at this ordinance, 1997 hyphen 57, to come up with amendments to make the membership at-large with no ex officio. Yes, sir.
Mayor, I have one more thing, if I could. So we previously had discussed as a council, and you had brought to our attention a need to consider a racial reconciliation commission. And I know we kind of, kind of got lost in the shuffle. We were supposed to meet as a body and kind of discuss it some more. While I was attending the VML conference, I had the opportunity to participate in the presentation that was done by the National League of Cities. It was called RACE AREAL, which stands for Race Equity and Leadership Initiative. It serves to strengthen local elected officials' knowledge and capacity to eliminate racial disparities, build more equitable communities. And so I sent out some communication to each of you via email. You should have gotten it. And the purpose for me doing that was to kind of get the conversation started back up again. And also, I did reach out to the individual who did the presentation with a group of us at the VML conference. And I did set up a conference call with that individual. I would like for one of my council colleagues to join me on that phone call so that we can at least have a better understanding of what that program would consist of.
Let me know what, what it is.
It's going to be on December 2 at 2:00 p.m.
Okay.
That's great.
Thank you.
I'm glad that we can get this going. And Bill, Bill had, or somebody over here had.
It was me.
Oh, okay.
You're right. Knowing that we're coming to the end of the year and planning's underway with next year's calendar, our Monday meetings. It looks like to me, at times, we struggle to fill up the agenda for a Monday meeting. I would like to see if there's consensus to just do the Monday meetings, and I'm talking about the public work session portion on an as-need basis instead of a regular calendar date. You know, we're always talking about our time as our most valuable asset. And I'm sure staff, especially as we come into the budget planning stage, probably needs all the time possible, as do we. So I'm not a person that likes to meet just because, you know, we need to meet. Let's have some substance there. So I guess I'm asking for a consensus that we just do a Monday work session on an as-need basis.
Let's, can we think about this and put it on the agenda for the, for the next Monday meeting? Hold on a second.
It's on your agenda for your November 25 work session, to discuss the calendar as well.
Well, that's very timely.
Timing is good.
Did I see another hand over here? Well, let's go into closed session. Is there a motion to do so?
I move to go into closed meeting A pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711a.1 for the purpose of discussing and considering prospective candidates for and appointees to boards and commissions. And B pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711a.3 for the purpose of discussing the disposition of real property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body, specifically regarding the Victory Crossing area. And C pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711a.7 for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the city, specifically regarding Michael A. Moore versus City of Portsmouth, Portsmouth Circuit Court case numbers 19003403, 19003277, and 19004481.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Ready for the question? We'll do a oral roll call. If you're in favor, please say aye. We call the roll, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Battle.
Aye.
Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Mr. Glover.
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Aye.
Mr. Moody.
Aye.
Ms. Semus.
Aye.
Mayor Rowe.
Aye. We're in closed session.